Okay, got it. All right. The December 15, 2022 meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. It is just after 6:30. All members of the board are present and welcome Bob Simmons. Happy to have you on board.
Thank you. Nice to be here.
So we always start our meetings with a public comment period and we end them with a public comment period. Anything relating to planning, members of the public can speak up and so let's start with our first public comment period. If you have something to say, please raise your virtual hand and you'll be called on.
Mr. Chair, I have a hand from Diane Vella.
Yeah. Hi Diane.
Hi Diane Vella, 17 King Street. I have, do you know if the town meeting, the special town meeting that's in January, is that gonna have some of the zoning changes on it for anything around the MBTA overlay district?
I do know and the answer is no.
The answer is no. Because I'm curious is, well, I know you're gonna talk about the action plan today, so I'll obviously be listening about that because I'm curious, is, are we including any affordable housing zoning in that? Plan?
Well, you mean in the T O B O D?
Yes, they're looking for some inclusionary zoning there for affordable housing.
Well, it's supposedly all gonna be affordable, so let's, I guess we need to define what we're talking about when we say affordable. There's market rate affordable and then there's subsidized affordable.
Not subsidized, market rate affordable is what we're looking at.
It is gonna be, it should be market rate affordable, but there will be, as per our bylaw, there will be a component of subsidized housing that's part of it also because we have for so many units that are built, you have to have, I think, 10% set aside for subsidized housing.
Yeah, yes, exactly. Thank you. I appreciate, and if I can ask one more question along this, I mean, my research is that the commuter rail district, which we are considered, they have lowered our number of acres from 100 to 32, which, which puts us, and 40% have to be around the rail, which is perfect. That's exactly where we are, but I wondered where are we?
We're 12.3 acres right now.
Right, but that's the 40% exactly that have to be within a half a mile of the, of the rail station, but that leaves us another 19 acres to identify within, to be, anyway, this, you may be answering my question when you talk about our compliance.
Why don't we wait till we?
Okay, yeah, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, anybody else? All right, next item on the agenda is an A and R approval not required, Van Aken and McKenna. 81 Thatcher Road map, 25 lot 80 and 6 Saratoga Court, and have 25 and lot 81. And is anybody here on behalf of the applicant for this matter? Nobody here?
Sorry. Hi, how are you? My name is Jennifer DeCarlo. I'm an attorney with Heaney and Associates out of Beverly and I am here to present this application.
Okay, well, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, members of the planning board. I appreciate the time. So this is really kind of a minor issue, if you will. It only concerns 53 square feet of land if you're able to look at the plan that was provided to you. Basically, by way of background is these two property owners, the owner of 6 Saratoga Court and the owner of 81 Thatcher Road have been involved in some litigation in the land court in regards to some encroachments that extend from 6 Saratoga Court over on to 81 Thatcher Road. And luckily, these parties have come together and they've reached a settlement and as part of that settlement, we're just gonna be adjusting the lot line that extends from the end of Saratoga Court to basically the rear of the property, this rear of the property debuts the marshland and the original lot land and I, I'm looking away because I'm looking at my other screen. The other lot line, our old lot line that's sort of being abandoned was pretty much a straight line that connected from the end of Saratoga Court to the marshland and so now it'll sort of jag a little bit, it'll zigzag a tiny bit. And that will permit the order of 6 Saratoga Court to maintain their walkway, which is critical for access to the back of their property. So this was a nice resolution. It only involves a very small amount of land. It's not creating a new lot by any means. It's simply increasing 6 Saratoga Court by that 53 square feet.
How long? How much?
53 square feet.
So there's gonna be, so that, just to clarify, there's gonna be a exchange of property from one, from one owner to the other that's, that's 53 square feet?
Should I share the plan?
Oh, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, that would be great.
Well, I did with, without muting myself.
It's a, it seems like it's pretty de minimis. And you said there's litigation over this?
Yes, it was, it began as an adverse possession case by the owner of 6 Saratoga Court against 81 Thatcher Road. Because they have, they've had this property for, I think, close to 40 years, 6 Saratoga Court, and so they've had a walkway in that area for some time. The ownership of 81 Thatcher Road changed in the last couple of years, I believe, 2018, and they discovered that the walkway encroached and so luckily, after some negotiation, they were able to come to this resolution.
Okay.
My sharing isn't working. I apologize.
Well, I'll tell you, this is probably one that if we don't share it, it's not gonna be the end of the world because a very small, oh.
I can share.
Someone's gonna do it already, Tom.
There we go.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Tom. So parcel A is what's being conveyed from whom?
From the owner of 81 Thatcher Road, which is Van Aken, to the owner of 6 Saratoga Court, which is Mr. McKenna. In the left-hand corner of the plan, there's sort of a blow up that kind of shows you that we're going from a straight line to this sort of zigzag and it's really only in a very specific area that the change is occurring.
What's, what's the circle there that looks like a line, a property line that's going right through it?
It's literally a paver walkway. It has kind of a circular area that had a bench on it, so that'll be removed once the, this plan, if it's endorsed tonight.
Oh, that, the, that area will no longer be?
Yeah, so Mrs. Van Aken, Ms. Van Aken, she intends to put a continuous stockade fence down, down the line to the marsh. There already is a stockade fence in the area of Saratoga Court, so it'll have to, you know, zigzag a little bit, but then it will straighten right out down the end. And so whatever's on her side of the fence will get removed and obviously she'll treat it as her own at that point.
Okay. Any discussion?
I had a little question and maybe it's being a little too specific, but what's shown in the plan here and it was shown in the blow up looked like very different things. The, the blow up in the upper left is fatter at the left. The lines between L1 and L2 are an inside corner versus an outside corner. Just a little curious why it look, or if it hasn't been shown on the, on the smaller scale plan.
I wonder if they, you know, it's a good question and my understanding is, and I think what is happening here, I don't know, I can't, we zoom in and see if it, if that makes a difference on my end. It does look slightly different. I will not deny it.
You look at L1 and L2, just to start with, and they're an outside corner in the upper left-hand blow up and they're not anything like that down here. It looks like, it looks like way more than 53 square feet in the blow up.
Yeah, parcel A detail.
Yes. It looks very different than what it's shown in the context of the two houses.
Yeah, but they, but they both say 53 plus or minus square feet.
Yeah.
But it does look different. Is your surveyor around?
Unfortunately, he did not join me this evening, so you know, I certainly don't want to have any confusion about what is being traded here or or swapped rather.
I'm looking, I'm looking at your parcel A detail and it says L1 is 8.62 feet and L2 is 6.69 feet. And then when we look at the blow up, I mean, the, the overall map, it has L1 and L2, but L1 does look a little different from. Yeah.
In the detail, it's very much an outside corner, that corner between L1 and L2, and it gets even fatter. Whereas in the blow up, it's fairly narrow at that part and just gets a little bigger as it goes on.
I think you raise a really good question. I wonder if it makes sense for me to request that this be continued so I can go back to my engineer and have him clarify that because I certainly, the idea here is that this plan is resolving a dispute, so I certainly don't.
I think you're, what I suggest is because with an A and R, we have a very short time fuse to either approve or deny it and it's 21 days from the day you file it. So there is no such thing as a continuance. So what I suggest is that you withdraw it and then refile it. We're not gonna charge you the filing fee all over again, but you might, you know, you might be able to refile it and maybe that'll clear up some of this issue that has been raised.
Okay, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, that would be good. Just to withdraw this, not without prejudice to refile and just for your own sake and your, and your client's sake and the other side's sake to clarify that these two areas, the one shown as parcel A in the, in the overall drawing, the one shown that's partially in the detailed drawing are in fact the same.
Okay. That's great. I appreciate, I really do appreciate the attention to detail on this, so thank you.
Okay, all right, so A and R, Van Aken has withdrawn, without prejudice to refile. And.
Thank you so much, members of the board.
So the next item on the agenda is Penny Pilser from Government Bylaws. Penny, are you here? There she is. In the sunny California.
I am, I am. The sun's going down and I'm, yes, I'm, I'm well lit today. Anyway, I'm, I'm here to talk to the planning board about some changes that we're making to, in the government and bylaw committee.
Okay. You're frozen.
That shouldn't be a California person.
Yeah. Only frozen orange juice. Yeah. Well, why don't we? Why don't we wait till the connection is better? She might have to reconnect.
There she goes.
Oh, there she is, okay.
It keeps, it's, it's cutting in and cutting out. I'm sorry. If, if it cuts out again and it's for a long time, I'll just come back and wait until you're done with whatever you go on to.
Okay.
Just a quick note on that, Penny. It, I know it's helpful to be able to see your face, but you will use much less bandwidth if you turn your camera off, so that might improve the quality of your voice.
Oh, okay, that let me, let me do that.
Are you close to router?
Um, I, I think so, but I'm in the house that I'm, I'm in the RBO, so I'm not sure what the router is, but I think it's, I think it's in a cabinet just right by me.
Sometimes you can open the cabinet too, that helps.
Yeah, okay, um, let me, well, let me keep talking and if, when, if I get lost, I'll run around and try to do that. Okay, um, the three changes and, and by and large, we, we aren't changing bylaws. That's not our task. We're reviewing them. But when one just doesn't seem to work, we do look at them more carefully and 8D and looked like it needed work. There are a couple of reasons for that and a couple of things we're talking about doing. The first is that responsibility is divided between the planning board, which seems to be for most stuff, it's, it's, it works slightly differently the way it's worded, but I, we think they envision that Concom would take care of wetlands issues, 40B issues would go to the zoning board and the planning board would get everything else. But the way it is sometimes written, it's just kind of, there's these three permitting authorities and anybody can do it and and the result, of course, is that nobody did. So when I went to look for stormwater permits, nobody had, had filed for a stormwater permit in the last five or six years at least. Um, the second thing that we're thinking, that we think we should do is change the number of square feet of disturbance that would require a permit. It is currently 20,000 square feet. There have been a number of projects that have been even bigger than that, that nobody has issued a permit about. But in, in addition, as we talked to people, it did seem between the Water Action Committee and, and the DPW and various people we spoke to that really 7,500 might be a better target, 7,500 square feet. Did we kind of pull it out of the air? Yes, we did. But, um, but it's consistent with kind of lot sizes and so on in Rockport and we thought it was a good place to start. And the third thing we did was make the permitting process more cumbersome, if you will. We added the need for an operation and maintenance plan and for a, and for a various other kinds of plans to, is, is part of the permit process. And we do see the planning board as being the logical place from which to do this. Our thoughts were you guys are, are doing the, the site plans. The town seems to be very confident that the planning board has the expertise needed to do this well. And it, it just seemed like kind of a no-brainer to hand it over to planning board, but you have not accepted that or thought about it. And we would, we would like to go to a public meeting in January on this and I was hoping to get some sort of a vote or some sort of approval from you that, yes, okay, yes, we know it's going to take more reset, resources and, and certainly I have been working with DPW and we have mentioned it a number of times that we need, will need more resource for this. There is an ability in the bylaw to retain an expert in stormwater and to, at, at the, at the applicant's expense. And so there, there is something there to help. The way I am told it works in other places, the current conservation, the new conservation officer says that the way it has worked in his situations is that there's, there is a firm that the town uses to give their stormwater advice and they go to them and, and get so they can work with them and all of these. So it isn't the applicant just going out and finding his cousin Joe and saying, oh, he's an expert. It's, we have somebody we work with and they will tell us how it goes. Sharing sometimes with Concom if there's a wetlands issue. And, and then the planning board does the rest. So that's kind of what we're thinking. Um, and just, what do you think? I guess is my question.
Can I ask some questions? If you notice to this here, and I'm, I'm confused a little by the, using the term disturbance. Are we talking entirely about during the period of disturbance, the control of water, or are we talking about the finished product after just the so-called disturbance, the, the new?
Yeah, we're talking about the finished product.
Okay, and when you talk about 7,500 versus 20,000, using the term disturbance again, are you talking about the area of actual construction? Are you talking about people who fit in the 20,000 zoning area versus the 7,000?
No, we're talking, we're talking about the actual disturbance, so.
Okay, so in that case, it is the disturbance.
Yes, it is, it is the actual disturbance.
So it could be in the 20,000 square foot district.
Yes.
And right now they'd have to be doing the whole piece of property and we're saying if they just did a quarter or a third of it or something, it would still qualify.
That's correct. The, the idea is that it is, it is not, for example, there had been an interpretation, I'm not sure from where, that, that if it was 20,000 square feet, but no lot, no individual lot had a 20,000 square foot disturbance, that it wasn't, it wasn't caught up with this. It is, it is the amount of land that's disturbed wherever it is on a lot that is, that is the, the cutoff. So if it's four lots and between the, and there's some sort.
Oops, we just lost you.
Let's give her a minute to try to reconnect.
Are we gonna try and do the meeting notes tonight?
No.
Okay.
Is that the answer you wanted to hear?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Now Mary, Mary did not put them on the agenda, so.
I noticed.
Yeah.
In the transmittal, she said we would talk about them, but.
Yeah, I know. Well, she was halfway there.
It said the next meeting or January 5th, I thought. Oh, okay, maybe.
There are a lot of minutes.
And they're very complete because they're from the tape, I assume.
Well, yeah, I'll talk about them. Yeah, well, I can talk about them now.
And they're a little hallucinogenic.
Yeah, you mean like, they're sleep inducing. That what you meant?
That would be soporific, I think.
Yeah, there, yeah, there, we have a new person doing them and, I mean, I've, I've read what she's done. I think it's, it's pretty good. You know, it's maybe more than we need, but I guess better to have more than less.
Yeah.
And, but they're long and she's moving along though. We're now, might as well talk about this now. She's, she started with June 2nd, which is where our prior person left off and left and so she's now through August and she's moving right along. I guess the thing we need to talk about isn't the individual, you know, particular items about the agendas, like is this name spelled right or is that, at this time is just, is everybody feel that she's on the right track now? Is she, is she doing a job that we can live with or there's some overriding issues with her minute preparation that we need to talk with her about, you know, before she goes on? Because if there are, we need, I need to tell them, tell her what they are.
Eventually, is this person gonna attend?
No. But she doesn't need to. Because she has the recorded minutes, recorded meetings and she can listen to the meeting.
You know, from the meetings.
Yeah. No, she's not gonna be a host. Basically a translator, you know, we desperately need someone to do the minutes. So I, from what I saw, I mean, they were maybe more, like I said, about that, maybe more than, but better to have more than less, you know? Sometimes less is more. Less is more, well, yeah.
Now you're talking our language.
You know, and maybe she'll get there, but right now I think, I don't think she has the the confidence to simply say, oh, I can just summarize that in a sentence, you know? She, for example, she doesn't need to put in the minutes the discussion about correcting the prior meeting's minutes. That I don't think we need. She could just say, you know, you know, meeting, prior meeting and it's discussed and corrected and that two sentences and that would be done. Yeah, things like that she could probably do, but you know, that'll, I think that'll come with time. I'm just very happy to have someone to do this.
Well, and once we catch up and we're just doing it a month at a time and you suggest do this or do that, it'll be a little more natural, I think.
Yeah, Penny, you're back.
I'm back. I'm right by the router now. I think I'm okay. Sorry about that. I'm.
So you were talking about, you know, Peter asked a good question about the disturbance and I, I have a similar question. There are two types of disturbances. Their destruction disturbance, the actual disturbance that occurs when things are being built, but that disturbance doesn't last. That's a temporary disturbance. And then there's the, you know, permanent disturbance that is obviously gonna be addressed. Are these stormwater management bylaws addressing just the latter or both?
I believe both. I can read you the, the definition, disturbance of land. Any action that causes a change in the position, location, or arrangement of soil, sand, rock, gravel, ledge, or similar earth material and includes earth fill, earth moving, and earth removal. So it would, if you built a house, it would be the square footage of the house. And then if you built a driveway, it would be the square footage of the driveway. And then if you built, you know, i- if this is all being done at the same time, it's all going to add to 7,500 or it might. So the idea is that if you're, so the idea is that it's the building and also the, and whatever it takes for them to build. So, you know, if they've got a tractor in there and it's all over and moving all sorts of stuff and then it's all put back, that also is going to be within the 7,500 square feet.
Okay, well, that answers the question that I had.
I'm wondering if we need to distinguish between what ends up being permeable and impermeable. That would certainly come out in the report.
The completion of the job or before or during?
Well, mainly concerned about after completion.
Well, I think that's gonna be part of our, our analysis is seeing after the completion what is permeable and what is impermeable and whether there needs to be more impermeable surfaces to absorb, you know, the water that would otherwise have gone into the ground that's now going somewhere else.
Okay, but we can't include that in the trigger number, I guess. Could we lose Penny again?
No, I mean, the trigger is just, the trigger is just the disturbance.
Okay.
Yeah, so whether, you know, otherwise it gets very complicated.
Yeah, well, right now we only look at things under certain conditions, right? Like for instance, when Stonehaven Lane came up, we, we, we were looking at the rain gardens and the pitch and the contours and stuff. So in a sense, we were kind of doing this even if it was outside of our bailiwick. Wasn't that a site plan review? Yeah. Site plan. In that case, right. Yeah.
But, but this, this will trigger, where I understand it, oh, Penny's still here or gone, but.
I'm here.
Oh, good, okay. My understanding is this will trigger a level of review with criteria that I'm assuming in the regulations will, which will address, you know, the mitigation measures that, that could be imposed if, if you meet the threshold.
That, that's correct. There's a, there's a.
That, that's correct. There's a, there's a, there would be an erosion and sedimentation control plan required as well as an operation and management plan and kind of a stormwater management plan, all of which are, are defined in the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. So it's kind of, it should be that most contractors will know what these things are and how to, how, how to comply because it's statewide.
Well, now we're back to the what's happens during construction versus whether that we accept the final result. Mitigation plans and things like that are all during construction.
Okay, this, this is also, this is also after construction. In fact, there's a provision that a performance bond might need to be put forward to make sure that the operation and maintenance plan works over time.
Is there gonna be a provision for a performance bond?
Excuse me?
Is there gonna be a provision for a performance bond if required?
Yes.
Thank you. So does anybody have more questions? I just, I have one, but I'll defer.
Yeah, I think we need to revisit the, the threshold, the seventy-five hundred. It sounds like a nominal amount that might apply to a lot of places in the region, but since we've got so much ledge and that makes our absorption into the soil substrate pretty limited, you know, evidenced by the failure to perk on a lot of properties.
Yeah.
Think maybe it needs to be a lower number.
We, we, yeah, I mean, our, our thought was this is quite a bit lower than twenty. And it seemed to be what a lot of people were kind of landing on. We, but we have other, other jurisdictions, they're not necessarily on ledge, you know, I, looking at other coastal towns, doesn't make sense. They've all got sand. But we saw everything from twenty-five hundred to back up to twenty thousand in other, in other towns. We, so it's a little bit of a shot in the dark. And the thought is that if it's the wrong number and people are still getting water in their basement, even though we've got the permitting and everything else, then we've got to take it down. That'll be in, you know, that'll be something we'll do. Right now, we just don't know because nobody's looked at it at all.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no kind of industry standard for this, is there, Penny?
No, there really isn't. And, and the state allows anything up to an acre. You know, so which obviously just really wouldn't work. So.
Yeah, that would. Has there been, I'm, I'm gonna sound ignorant here, but have you had a public hearing on this?
We're going to have one. That's, we wanted, wanted to make sure, we didn't want you guys hearing about it for the first time at the public hearing. It's in January. I will have to email you all out, I think the eighteenth, but I can't swear to it and I don't have it right in front of me right at this minute.
That's the date of our special town meeting, so don't do it on.
That is it then.
You're joining us?
Um, no, we're, it, it's a public hearing on Zoom and it's earlier. It's in the afternoon.
Oh, okay. So you're not gonna overlap.
Oh, no, no, we're, it's just, you know, it's an awful lot of town business for one day also, but that seems to be what happened.
Yeah, because I, I guess to Tom's point, well, there are two points here that we need to address. One is, you know, well, we should hear at the public hearing, if, if people have any ideas other than seventy-five hundred about and why they're better that number or whatever. And then the second thing is, I guess what you're asking Penny now for our board is whether we're okay with taking over the jurisdiction over the permitting of this stormwater management. You there, Penny?
I am, I am. I mean, yeah, that is, that is the main thing. Because we, we won't be formal until we go to the town meeting, which is on April first. And assuming that the town meeting goes along with us, which I remember is a kind of something that you can't count on. But I think, I think from reading, I won't read your cha- chapter and verse because there are various descriptions of jurisdiction in the old eight D. I think they were thinking that you would have, that planning board had jurisdiction over everything that wasn't CommCom or forty B. But it isn't absolutely clear that that was true. This will make it very clear.
Anybody, I'm, I'm okay with that. Anybody have any thoughts? I mean, it seems like our board, because considering we're doing site plan reviews and subdivisions, that this would kind of be a natural item to join, we're already doing.
I agree.
It would help to have a planner.
Or, or the force.
Let me know when you find one. Uh, but, but I, you know, we, we tried that, Tom, and we tried to get a part-time planner and it was, we were unsuccessful because we just couldn't get someone who wanted to be a part-time planner.
Sure. I think the next step to require, you know, they, they pay for somebody to do the report.
Yeah, what, what we need.
Would at least help us.
We need to have like an engineering firm with the requisite expertise, kind of retainer, but just available so we can use them to, you know, do a peer review and, and they, and we can require an escrow. So the applicant needs to fund the review and, you know, we certainly don't want to have to go through a engineer selection process every time we want, you know, someone to take a look at one of these things. So that, that would be really important.
I think a realistic part of the size that we're talking about is also if we've only had none of these in five years, we can probably handle the load.
You're probably right.
Seventy-five hundred means we suddenly have twenty a month. That's probably different. So I think we should think of that as a kind of fungible number that we pick one and if it doesn't work, we, we change it later.
Yeah.
Would the building inspector have data for how many would have met this threshold over some period of time?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know. I asked the W P, you know, we asked, we, we did go to some lengths to try to figure out whether, you know, what the past, you know, our past has been, but we just, the information doesn't seem to be there.
It would only be with the building inspector. I don't think.
You know, yeah, it might be. I don't think anybody's paid attention to stormwater really ever. At least in recent memory.
Well, we can certainly handle everything that's come to us because that's what's come to, everything that has to come to us has come to us in the last several years. So this wouldn't be too onerous on top of that. I mean, we, you know, any more than looking at their lighting, um, looking at their approach, looking at property lines, setbacks.
Oh, think, think about the last handful of applications we've had of more, not necessarily complex, but projects of some scale, residential projects. All of those seem to have been accompanied by some um, discussion and calculation of managing stormwater, whether it's through rain gardens or, you know, some infiltration. You know, seventy-five hundred square feet is a de minimis. I mean, I compare that to a conforming lot of size in the G zone.
Great.
I, you know, I mean, if, if, if you're gonna have a seventy-five hundred square foot lot subject to this proposed ordinance, um, some are gonna be, I think fairly obvious in terms of the need for stormwater management, others less so. But maybe some of these simply get handled or processed with something as simple as a, a dry well with, you know, gutters and downspouts running subsurface to that dry well. But again, i- it's gonna be lot-specific. And I think this, this ordinance is, is going to allow us to insert that requirement if somebody isn't addressing it right out of the gate.
Harry, are you saying it depends on the lot size? I thought it was the disturbance area.
Well, I think sometimes I'm gonna equate the two. Uh, I just compared it to what seventy-five hundred square feet represents and that happens to tie out to a conforming lot in the G zone. That's all.
Tightest, tightest slots.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, I think we've been trying to work with it anyway. Certainly the thing up on Stonehaven, we spent more time than anything else on.
Yeah.
That's the one I run on, those two adjoining properties, that little house in the, the first one that we came up with when I came on the board, I don't remember the street now, that where they were building the garage with the.
Wallace Road.
Wallace, yeah. We were very concerned about the ladder that ran off the back, far back left corner. And, and everybody dealt with it, I think. I mean, I think we had a positive impact.
Yeah, you know, we, we did and we had in those cir- both those circumstances, two kind of very cooperative applicants. But this, the good thing about this, it would give us some real standards to fall back on. So it wouldn't be like, well, you should do this or you should do that. I mean, we'll have, you know, we'll have some standards that can be looked at and applied. And I think that's, that's important. For example, and I'm not saying that this is gonna happen at all, but let's say the Cape Ann, you know, tool company property is redeveloped. Well, there's certainly gonna be seven thousand five hundred square feet of a disturbance there. Well, that's, that's just an example of a much larger project that will really need to have technical guidance.
That one would be a site plan review. In any case, I think the increase in our load would be for areas that were not gonna be site time reviews that do have this disturbance.
Yeah, that's true.
In that case, up at the, up at the hotel, they were going to excavate to provide some of the half to fill roughly, I think, for the tool company, in which case, so that would bring both properties into.
If, both, I don't think we ought to be talking about that. I mean, that, that's, that's an active application. Yeah, I don't think we should be talking specifically about that.
Point taken.
Okay, well, look, I think Penny, I think you, your committee's on the right. I think everybody on the planning board is comfortable with taking this thing, uh, taking this jurisdiction over, so.
Did, did we mention this in Robert's job description when that?
So you'll be fun.
I think he's got it all figured out and he knows what people to go.
You know, the new guy gets all the new jobs, so.
Yeah, for the first three years or whatever.
Better never miss a meeting because.
Break in, break in. Or, yeah, or the person that's absent from the meeting, right? Um, well, I, I like, I mean, I like your idea, Jason, of just, you know, having, if, if it becomes too onerous, we could, we could have one or two or three even engineering folks on board to handle it if it became difficult. But I, I, I don't think seventy-five hundred square feet is that small of a, of an, an area. I mean, you could have a one acre or a half acre house site that's only disturbing a sixth of an acre like this seventy-five hundred square feet just for the house and the driveways and and it would be slipping by in the normal review and maybe that's not so good. Especially since those larger lots would probably have more of an effect on stormwater that's in some of the more rural sections of town. Just guessing here, but.
Ideally, it would depend on the characteristics of the lot, but I don't think we can distinguish that way.
Yeah.
Like if the lot perked, we're worried about it less.
Yeah.
Okay, well, this is all good stuff for down the road. And is there anything else, Penny, you think we need to talk about tonight?
No, I, I think there are a few zoning provisions that are, talk about less land disturbance than seventy-five hundred. Um, and, and some that talk about more and maybe I, I wrote you an email about it many moons ago, Jason. Those, that may be something that you'll want to think about in the future. Otherwise, I think I'm getting what I want here is the ability to get up in front of the public meeting and say, we've talked to the planning board, they've discussed it, and they're okay with taking this on. Can I, can I do that?
Sounds, I mean, I think she can. Anybody have any other, any objection to that?
No objection. I like it.
Objection.
Yeah, I don't think we need a vote on this. You just have.
Yeah.
And I think you're ready to go, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. And good luck with your nice granddaughter.
Oh, I certainly will. Thank you very much. Bye-bye, all.
Bye.
Let the babysitting begin.
Indeed. How would I?
Okay, for interim compliance with section three A guidelines for multifamily housing action plan, I, I wrote that. Let me just explain what this is. I left unfortunately, I did leave it at home, but I do have it on my computer here, my, and what it is, is that, you know, back to what we talked about, I think quite a bit, when we were adopting the, the rezoning of the train station, or at least not rezoning, but the overlay zone, that the twelve point three acres, is that at the time, we were really puzzled at how the, the state came up with the numbers that they came up with in terms of what, how much area within the, you know, half mile around the train station has needed to be zoned for multifamily. And they've since, you know, they've since modified their guidelines. They actually have new guidelines that are out there. But they, they've softened their guidelines. That's the good news. They've softened them for communities like Rockport, which just don't have the land area and just in, you know, the total land mass in the town and because of geographic issues, geology, uh, you know, property that's owned by the town and property that's in the watershed, et cetera, et cetera. You know, to comply with what was proposed was essentially impossible. Now, of course, don't forget what the penalty is for non-compliance is you don't have the opportunity as a community to seek several grants from the state. One of them is Mass Works. I forget what the other one is. But none of those grants have ever been the subject of an application from Rockport in, in the past. Not to say that they won't be in the future, but Rockport, unlike some other communities, has never sought these grants. So now, under the new revised guidelines, they have said, in addition to the acreage requirement, which I think is like, you know, somewhere, we're at twelve point three, I think, the acreage is like thirty-something, I'm, I'm not sure. But the number of multifamily unit capacity, meaning how many multifamily units can the town of Rockport absorb? Or should they absorb according to the, the state? Well, it's six hundred and fifty-seven. If you build out, according to our, I remember this from our consultant, if you built out every square inch of the twelve acres that we have the overlay zone on, um, with, you know, giving, giving the fact that they're gonna be roads and setbacks and all that, we're, we're at about a hundred and sixty units. So we're looking at, you know, another, you know, do the math, you know, another hundred or so units that we need to provide to, to be in compliance. um that we need to provide uh to to be in compliance. And we need to have this zoning redone by January of two thousand twenty-four. So we have basically just over a year. Now, what what I did now was submit what the state calls an action plan. Very, you know, very simple document uh where basically we, it's here, you know, if any, I'm going to circulate it to everybody. But it it basically says what we've done. Um, you know, with our rezoning, which, by the way, as everyone may know, the Attorney General this was it this week or last week? Um, no, it was this week.
This week.
Who approved of the adoption at town meeting back in May. So it only took them, you know, seven, you know, seven months, but that's okay. Um, it was uh, it was a long time waiting in limbo, but they did approve it. They they did it in a very lengthy memorandum. I think that was in large part in response to the petition that had been filed on behalf of the number of residents, which um, you know, was was objecting to everything that we'd done in the TOVOD and also the ADUs. So, but those have now been approved by the Attorney General. And um, so by January of this of next year, by the end of January, we had to file this action plan, and I've actually done it because I said it was, it was a simple thing to do. It, why, you know, if if you can do it now, why not do it? So I did it and um basically told them that we um we are moving forward with our rezoning over the next year to hopefully comply with the balance of what is required for multifamily housing in the town of, multifamily housing zoning, not construction, but zoning in the town of Rockport. And um, there's a timeline which basically has us having completed the zoning process by the fall of two thousand and twenty-three. Why did I do that? I did it because to comply with the action plan requirements. To be able to even file it, you had to file this document. And if we didn't give them a schedule of our acting on the zoning, then we couldn't file the action plan with um Department of Housing and Community Development. If we couldn't file the action plan by January, by the end of January two thousand twenty-three, we will then automatically be out of compliance and as of that date, be ineligible for the grants that are being held, though, you know, the carrot uh grants that are out there. So since it was a simple document to file, since it stated an intention that may never be realized, it, you know, it was kind of a no-brainer to just do it. And and then, you know, now we've got to decide them on, you know, rezoning. And so what I've done is I've talked with um Mitch Vieira, and I said, look, this isn't just our decision about rezoning. This has to be a decision from the, you know, select board. I mean, they they have to say, yeah, we want to see, you know, zoning for more multifamily housing in the town of Rockport than what's there now. And that's the next step is to take this to the select board, make a presentation and say, okay, guys, what do you think of this? Do you, do you want us to go forward with this or not?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Doesn't the, doesn't the ADU provision provide a multi-housing capability?
Not, it's not, that's not satisfying the multifamily housing that based on the how it's defined in the law.
And I think we're never going to solve the whole problem unless we do lots of different strategies. Like ADU plus transit.
Right, we're never going to find one. This is why it gets complicated for us, because we're not going to find one area where we can say, okay, let's put, let's zone all this, you know, overlay or whatever you want to do. We're going to do all this multifamily here. We're probably going to have to have areas of multifamily housing zoned throughout various districts in the town. To to achieve this result of having, you know, uh, basically another hundred, the capacity for another hundred multifamily units. We're not going to be able to do that in in any one place, and we're going to need, and we're going to need help figuring out how to do it. I.
Yeah, I I want to uh sort of follow up on something you said earlier, Jason. Back on December fourth, The Boston Globe ran an article. And in that article, they were referring to uh recent events. I think it involves six different MBTA communities in in Massachusetts, but I'm just going to read some expert excerpts from the uh, from the article. Wallfam Housing Authority learned that the state is cutting its contribution to the budget to the, you know, the Wallfam Housing Authority uh next year by more than three hundred thousand dollars. Even more perplexing than the cuts, it goes on to say, is the reason for them. Wallfam's failure to comply with early procedural requirements of the state's new MBTA communities law. An ambitious effort to tackle Massachusetts housing crisis by mandating new multifamily zoning in communities served by the MBTA. So, you know, we we we've had discussions and we've been informed of specific grants that are at risk. But uh, this, this throws sort of a different light on things, and I I have no idea what the town of Rockport receives from the Commonwealth for um, you know, affordable for uh for housing of its senior citizens, but uh the article went on to say that uh there were certain communities, uh, one, one was on the South Shore. They were considering, and I don't know how they would do this, basically removing the MBTA station that they have so they wouldn't have to comply with the reg.
Okay, that's one way.
Yeah, I I mean, it was, it was remarkable reading, reading that, but, you know, it's, it's gotten to that, that level.
Yeah. So, well, thanks for, yeah, I mean, I guess certain communities, especially those that have have grants under these programs, um, could find themselves in trouble. But we, you know, the town of Rockport doesn't know. It would be a shame to say, okay, well, we can't do it, and we don't care about these grants and you know, in perpetuity, we're not going to care about them. Well, maybe we will care about them at some point. But if we don't, you know, try to comply with this, then it's not going to be a choice.
It would be. I I was saying, it would be ironic if the grants were for affordable housing.
If what?
The grants were for affordable housing. That would be.
It would be ironic, yeah.
No, I think it's for other.
Basically, the essence of this article.
Yeah.
So uh, anyway, that's, you know, we we had a lot, we got a lot of um interference and and uh opposition to the uh TOVOD, which seemed to be the most pretty natural thing to have housing around, immediately around the train station. And um, you know, I I just, at at this point, it it comes down to political will. And does, do the powers in the town of Rockport have the political will to say, go forward and and address and and have some zoning that will that will allow the capac- our two hundred and sixty, uh, six hundred and fifty-seven, I'm sorry, uh, units? Did I say six fifty-seven? I'm sorry.
That sounds, I thought, that's what the original calculation was, wasn't it?
Yeah, no, no, it's um, I'm sorry, I have it here. I, it's in.
Back when we were talking about fifty acres.
Yeah, well, no, now it's um, they say, they, if you look at, if you look at the website, and I, everyone should go to it, the MBTA uh, community's website, webpage at the Department of Housing and uh Community Development, the multifamily unit capacity, I'm sorry. My mistake if I said a different number, I apologize. The multifamily unit capacity requirement for the town of Rockport. This is as determined by the Commonwealth. This is not a negotiable number. This is the number that they have assigned to the town of Rockport based on our overall size, the number of actual housing units in the town, which I think are around three thousand or something. They've said that our multifamily unit capacity is three hun- I'm sorry, six hundred and fifty-seven, six five seven. We have rezoned. We have given an overlay zone that has a maximum capacity of one sixty. So this is going to be, you know, like fourfold.
Four times.
What we have zoned for already somewhere in the town of Rockport. For multiple.
So we're back to fifty acres.
No, not fifty acres, just the capacity.
No, but I mean, if if our current twelve acres handles a hundred and sixty, and that's about a fourth of what we need, then we must need somewhere around forty-eight acres.
Yeah, I think it's like forty or something. It's.
Because they started at fifty.
Yeah, they did, but if you go on their website, they did, they did cut us a break, uh, not a huge one.
Not a huge one.
Yeah, they did cut us a break. Uh, they they have it all calculated out. How many acres, how many units? Um, yeah, it's all there. So, you know, this is a big deal.
Forty acres and a mule.
Uh, that's where we are.
I think, I think we're doing it because it's a good idea.
Well, more housing is needed. It's, it's, yeah, it's not, it's more than a great idea. It's, it's a necessity.
I think to Diane's point, though, we're not zoning for affordable. Well, I mean, zone zoning doesn't actually do that specifically. We zone for density and size and minimum area and maximum. And the hope is here, we'll, we create more smaller, dens- denser neighborhoods that will pick up this now, and it will be less expensive because of all those things.
Correct. You know, the, I have to say, there, the um housing community development has a very compelling um, kind of like um it's like a slideshow on their, on their website, which i- it's not, it's, it's all factual, and it basically shows how Massachusetts, Eastern Massachusetts is far, far behind many areas of the country when it comes to creation of new housing. We are way behind them. And that, you know, and that's what's driving the prices so incredibly high. Because housing isn't there. I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward when you boil it down. We don't have the units, and so the prices go up. And um, you know, you look at other parts of the country, they have, they they, in the last ten years, they have built way more units than we have. That, when I say we, I don't mean Rockport, I mean, our, you know, the the Boston metro area, way more. All right.
Jason, Jason, uh, I don't know if you know this or not, Denise Donley has had her hand raised for a while.
Oh, I don't know that. Denise, did you want to talk now or?
Yeah, I I just had a question. Um, I can't turn my camera on. I don't know what's going on with my computer, but um I think I need to restart. But um, is the six fifty-seven um inclusive of existing multifamily units or additional multifamily units?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. It's inclusive, but I don't know how many multifamily unit zoning. This is multifamily unit zoning that does not require a special permit.
But don't we have that in the town, downtown area right now?
Uh, if we do, it's very small.
Well, I thought that was one of the things we discovered when we were looking at creating the twelve acres. Maybe I'm remembering that wrong.
Yeah.
Projects um add to that or are included in that?
There's only two. Go ahead.
Well, it was, the point is, though, if we're, if we're, we have to fill the gap between, we have to fill a gap to reach a minimum of six hundred and fifty-seven units. I don't think we're close to that, even if you include anything that's downtown. Plus the fact, it can't be by special permit. It has to be.
Well, I, I understand, but I think once we do the housing production plan, we should have a better sense of how many multifamily units we have already that don't require a special permit.
Right, that's right. That's a segue into that. I mean, we.
Yeah.
Really need that.
Okay, thank you.
Do the Harbor Light, does the Harbor Light cause it to run giant? Does, does the half-mile circle extend that far? Kind of feel like it did.
Yeah, it's a pretty big area when you take.
Yeah.
Takes up a lot of Rockport action.
Yeah. I think we, I think you got it, we got to get past the scare tactics that were, I heard so much in Gloucester of, we don't need another Halyard complex plopped in the middle of this. We're not talking about letting people go higher than two and a half stories. I mean, it's still talking about the kinds of, just increasing the density with smaller units in the comparable to what's allowed in the underlying zoning areas.
And this time, we're going to need a two-thirds vote.
Is that correct?
Yeah, no, that's true, Tom.
To change the zoning, yeah, unless there's another special.
Housing, we might, we might be exempt from that. Well, we'll see.
Well, because all we're really doing is making more of this DOD.
Oh, right, exactly. But it's not necessarily going to be adjacent to the train station.
Right, yeah, but it could be near, it could be within walking distance of the.
Yeah, I mean, a half mile is is a huge area. And it can even be outside of the half mile if you can show you can't do it within that.
Yes, yeah.
All right, well, anyway, that's, that's the next, you know, that's, that's coming up, so, yeah. That's all I have on that.
Jason, you have Diane Bellas' handle?
Yeah, uh, you know, I let Denise talk because she's a liaison to our planning board, uh, usually want to reserve public comments to the end. Can you hold off Diane to uh till we get to the comment period?
She gave us a thumbs up.
Thank you.
It's a real thumb.
Yeah, all right, um, member items.
I have one. I sent an email out earlier uh today regarding the uh article that appeared in the Gloucester Daily Times today, front page. Just below the reference to a Rockport issue. So the Supreme Judicial Court ruled yesterday that the housing choice uh regulation and uh guidelines, which includes the requirement of opposing parties uh post a bond uh in in certain circumstances. This relates to a case going on in Salisbury, which includes some affordable housing uh in in the mix. It's a fifty-six unit project. And so uh, the SJC ruled that the statute um is uh is valid and applicable. And so therefore, um, groups have to be very specific and very clear in their opposition um as to the exact reasons why they're opposing a project versus simply not wanting a project. I think, I think it's an article worth reading if you haven't already, um, because I think, I think this, this is going to grow legs. I think this is going to uh find its way into other housing projects. This happened, this happens to be a forty B project. But uh, I can think of other projects recently on the North Shore, uh, one in particular that was voted down by the uh the planning board, and um, it's now in litigation. the planning board and it's now in litigation. It's going to the land court. That's the project in Wyndham. Hamilton, rather, Hamilton. So.
Yeah, well, you know.
There was one odd thing about that article. It said that Salisbury had already achieved their 10% state mandate. And they still had a 40B. I thought you wouldn't be subject to 40B once you met your 10%.
Yeah, there was that. I, I can't explain that to you. I don't know why that. But as we know, the Gloucester Daily Times always is accurate.
I set my watch for four days a week.
They just got a bunch of awards, according to the Gloucester Daily Times.
Wasn't for accuracy, I don't.
Well, they certainly do deliver it early, I have to say. It's out there pretty early. Okay, any other member items? Adam, well, I'll say it again. Welcome, Robert Simmons to our board. Great addition.
Thank you. Thank you, good. You can just call me Bob. Bob's fine.
Yeah, that was my next question. What do you, how do you like to be called?
Yeah, I usually go by Bob.
Okay, good.
That's fine.
It's, it'll be great having you and you're obviously not afraid of speaking up, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to diving into this MBTC, MBTC. I've done a little research on my own prior, just to understand. Try to understand what, what they're doing here. One, one thing I'm curious about is when you, when you build all these units and they give you access to this money that you're already getting, plus money, additional money. Do they also make promises to make sure your train service gets expanded to handle the added load that they've made you build?
Oh, oh, that.
Oh, that.
Right now, right now, they have some empty seats.
Yeah, it's, it's going to take a while probably, but to me, the thing is, is not the empty seats as much as the schedule, you know, when it's, when the trains are running sometimes of the day at two hours apart. Yeah. Makes it really tough for people that are trying to commute in.
Be careful what you ask, or they'll park more trains here that run overnight.
Yeah.
Well, that, but, but the last.
Well, they're all going to be electrified soon anyway.
Oh, yeah, sure. All right, I don't have anything else other than my things I've already talked about. I've talked about the minutes. Please read over the minutes, because we will have a marathon minute session at our next meeting. Hopefully, we'll try to really go through them quickly and.
Don't we have to get ready for the special meeting, the town meeting at our next?
Well, that's, you know, we got the town meeting on January 18th and Mitch has all the 15 Warren articles. We are working on getting that done and with their, I guess, town council's looking at them. And, yeah. That'll be an interesting, it should be a pretty straightforward meeting compared to the last one, but you know, who knows?
And this, this is Jason basically trying to pass all the nuts and bolts kinds of boilerplate language that just has needed updated because it's archaic.
Yeah, that's, that's a good part of it, Bob. Some of it are some new provisions. For example, the the water supply protection overlay district, which is in the current zoning, it's kind of a, it's not very coherent. And so that's been completely rewritten. I took a stab at it and Eric Hutchins, who has been involved with this for a long, long time, he used to be the chairman of the planning board. He's also been involved. So that's, that's a completely new section, but you know, nothing controversial. It's all pretty straightforward stuff. Yeah, so you should be seeing pretty soon the, you know, the Warren articles posted and we've got our meeting on the.
Oh, yeah. In the next couple of days, huh?
Yeah, 20, I think 21 days before, so pretty soon.
Okay, it's going to be a long meeting just because you have to go through the process now for every single one of them, right? Say it, read it, explain it, call it.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of them are, are very short and compartmentalized, as you know, and the reason is so that way it's not going to be overwhelming. They're very, some of them are extremely simple and non-controversial. Others will probably take a little more discussion. But the point is, though, that this way, if some of them, they're all two thirds vote, so if some of them don't get it, then it's not going to pull down the other ones. And that's the idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
A question for Bob. Are you on the distribution list yet?
He is.
I think I am. I, I did receive some emails on this, on this meeting, so I assume you're, you're your administrator having trouble. You did contact me and get all my, all my info there, so.
And I was done, that was all done today, so. Okay, any other member items? All right, well, we'll move to public comments and I know Diane, you had your hand up earlier, so. Be unmuted.
Thank you, Diane Bella, 17 King Street. And just for Bob's edification, I wanted to let you know who I, who I'm representing. Is, is obviously I'm representing myself in living in Rockport, but I am working in an initiative with ECHO. ECHO is the Essex County Community Organization. And our priority for our work, it's a, a faith-based organization predominantly. We have two members, the UU Church and the Congo Church here in Rockport. Plus, we have, I mean, it's, it is faith-based, but we have all kinds of, of folks, including unions that are involved in this. And this is a, a bigger organization. So there's a small initiative group that have taken this on in Rockport. And we have done a lot of research, so we have a lot of this research that you were talking about today. We knew. We want to know how we can support you, the planning committee, and getting these things passed. I would really appreciate, you know, we are community organizers, is what we do. If this goes to select, we, we can do things to get people there to, to help out. And so keep that in mind, that this is, this is what we do. And we are there, there to help get this initiative off the ground in any way that we can. I keep it moving. I, I did, I, I think there might be a mistake. I've done a lot of work on this. I think there might be a mistake. They said 15 units per acre. That ends up to be 480. I don't know why they continue to stick with the 657. I agree with you. That, that would be a question that I would have. I also know that they are the Rockport Housing Authority. They would cut funding. So that's a place where we really do have a, something to lose if we don't proceed. And I want you to know that, at least from my, our perspective, there's an enormous amount of help out there from CHAPA, from MAP, from all of the, there, there's people was waiting to help us figure out, figure out the things that we need to figure out. And I would, you know, they have been very responsive to our questions and very patient and responsive to, to us, and I would assume they would be to you as well. I'm hoping that I can get a copy, Jason, if it's possible, of our action plan.
Yeah, sure.
That would be really helpful. That they, you know, DHCD has, has printed out a compliance model, a 3A compliance model that I, I assume that you've seen or haven't seen, that can give us information on how to do that model. And I'm hoping that we can get our number reduced. I think it's, I agree with you. I think it's a little bit too, too many, but it's not. If we can get it in the half a mile district, and you know, I would, anyway, anyhow, any way we can support, I would love to support, we would love to support you. In that. And one, one last question. You had mentioned that in, in the our zoning, you said it was market rate affordable housing. Does that mean you're using AM, the AMI to figure out what's affordable? Because I've never heard market rate affordable housing, that term before.
Well, what I'm saying, Diane, is that it, it's, we, two things. Market rate affordable means affordable, housing that's affordable, not because of any subsidy or government mandate or requirement or limitation, but housing that's affordable because of its size and location. That's what I meant by market rate.
Okay.
I'm sorry, as opposed to you can't charge more than X for this housing, or you have to provide, you know, there has to be subsidized. That's a whole print.
No, I, I, I understand, I understand that this is not low income and it's not, I, I absolutely not Section 8, none of that stuff. I agree with that. But my understanding is, and again, we'll, I'll do some more research, is that we can have, you know, in, that, that we will have affordable housing based on the AMI of Rockport, which is the average medium income. And it probably would get there because of the size and location, I would, but we can actually make inclusional zoning to include that.
Well, we, you know, we haven't, we haven't done that except for, we do have, and I may mention this earlier, any kind of housing development that has six or more units in Rockport. And this is actually one of the provisions that's going to be voted on in January, which, January 18th. There's, I think it's about 10% of the units need to be set aside as subsidized housing units.
And those would be deed restricted.
Right, no, I understand. And that's not really what I'm asked, that, that we're asking for here, but I know we're at 4.6, including the Granite Crossing. We're only at 4.6 and we need to be at 10%, but that's another issue. That's kind of another issue is, is that we see it, we see this.
Sounds like what you're talking about is something that we don't have in Rockport.
Not generally included in zoning.
Well, I'm just saying that it's possible you can do it if you wanted to do it, that my understanding is, and again, I get lots of this information from CHAPA and MAP that are giving us advice on what to advocate for, and they were very clear that inclusionary affordable zoning can happen.
Yeah.
It's optional. It has nothing to do with MBTA. It's optional, but the affordable housing.
I understand what you're saying. We're, you know, we're trying to, I guess, trying to fight one battle at a time here, you know, we're.
Right, well, we're here to, we're, we're here to help. We've done a lot of research. We have, I'm happy to talk to people and tell you about our meetings.
No, it's, you're, it sounds like you're a great resource. And, yeah, hopefully we can be talking.
One other, one other point on those numbers, 16 units per acre was the lowest, the minimum density that you could have. So we could have done more, but we had to also get it passed. And we had to get it started. So 13 acres, I think at the time, was the minimum acreage in our first pass and 16 was the unit. So we did try to soften the blow to a certain extent.
Yeah.
And I hope you can soften the blow even further by maybe using that 15 per acre, because 32 is the number that they've given us now to.
In Rockport, that's 32 is the number, yeah.
Right.
Also gave us that 657 number.
Well, that doesn't make sense, because the math doesn't make sense. So I don't know if there's a, there's, there's some, some snafu there.
Well, if we did 32 acres and tried to get 600 people out of it, we'd have to put in a lot more than 16 units. And, and 16 units per acre, we can actually still fit in the scale of a lot of the houses in town.
Right.
You know, because there'll be multifamily houses, but they won't be 30 person, 30 unit apartment buildings.
One of the, one of the problems, I'll, I'll trail off after this, is that when I was filling out this form, I was actually getting kind of frustrated because there was no contact information for anybody at the state. There was no phone number. There was no, if you have questions, call this number. Or if you want to talk to somebody, call this person or email this person. So I'm, I'm like, okay, well, you know, just deal with what you have, with what we've told you and get it done. My concern, Diane, was simply to get it filed on time. You know, so we comply.
Right. And I have some contacts. I have people that I've been talking to, so I'd be happy to give you the context.
You know where to reach me. Please get, call me tomorrow or something and, and let me know who they are.
Okay. I don't have your phone number, but I can look it up.
Okay. All right, any other public comments? None?
Where's Toby?
I don't know. You want to get him on the phone?
Yeah.
Here, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Peter, seconded by Tom. Roll call vote. Harry?
Hi.
Rob, Bob?
Hi.
Okay. Tom?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
All vote in favor, meeting adjourned. It is 7:58. Thank you very much, folks. And everyone have a.
Merry Christmas.
Just happy holiday and we'll see you next year.